Craven County Board of Commissioners Regular Session for Monday, July 2nd is now in session. Madam Clark, will you call the roll?
Certainly. Commissioner Jones?
Here.
Commissioner Liner?
Here.
Commissioner McCabe?
Here.
Mr. Sampson?
Here.
Commissioner Tyson?
Yes, here. Sorry.[30.39][30.39](Laughter).
Vice Chair Dacey?
Here.
Chairman Moore?
Here. And would you please put your phones on silent ring? Could you stand for the pledge, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, not God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our Father and our God, as we only come before Your presence tonight, but the Father that thank You, Father, that be able to come together one more time; oh, Father, we thank You for blessing this kind and almighty way; oh, but Father, that we can be blessing to others, but Father, that we have been so good to us, Father; oh, Father, let us look over the world, Father, and see things happening everywhere; oh, Father, we thank You for bringing us together as one binded and baptized believer in Christ Jesus, that we may be able to look out at one another, that we may hold love in our heart and not hatred; oh, we thank You, Father, for all You done for us, what You gonna do for us, continue to bless us on almighty way, that we may be a blessing to others. In Jesus' name we pray, and count it all done. Amen.
Amen.
Okay, everybody's had an opportunity to look over the agenda. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Second? All in favor of approving the agenda say aye.
Aye.
Nays, the ayes have it. Next is petition of citizens. Vice Chair?
Linda Moore?
Linda Moore.
Good evening. Linda Moore, 4442 River Shore Drive, New Bern, North Carolina. And I'm here tonight to invite the commissioners and anybody else in the audience who would like to attend a presentation by Linda Monk, also known as the Constitution Lady, who's going to be talking about the Fourteenth Amendment, because this July is the 150th anniversary of the passing of the Fourteenth Amendment. She, Linda Monk, is a constitutional scholar, a journalist, and an award-winning author. The event is on July 27th at 7:00 PM at Coleman Performance Hall, and would love for folks to attend, and if you need any more information, you can contact me, I'd be happy to give it to you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ray Griffin?
God bless you, Ray Griffin, 1981, Streets Ferry Road, Vasspor, North Carolina. There's no doubt we are living in unstable and turbulent times, values are eroding, our moral culture is deteriorating, and there's an increase in anti-Christ sentiment surrounding this whole world, and with this being true, we can turn off the news, shut out our families, shut them in the house, or we can choose to see there has never been a greater time on this Fourth of July to put our trust in God. This is a time to recognize that He is in control, and He still rules this whole world, and I'm thinking about how good He's blessed this nation. A while back, each and every one of you here voted on building an ABC store in Bridston, and I got home and I prayed about that thing, and I like to pray and thank God for what He's done, and I began to thank the Lord, seemed to say something that if just one of you that night had stood up, one of you had have stood up and not voted with the crowd, that you would have been a light in this community, your light would have shined, you would have been, no doubt, people would have looked at you as headers one, that really cares about our community and different things. And I began to pray about that thing, and then I came across a verse in the Bible, in John 33:3, and it says, "Call upon the name of the Lord and listen to what he said, and God will answer." Anyhow, I got to thinking about that thing, and I came back the next meeting, and when we came back the next meeting, God seemed to answer prayers, and I looked around, there was one that the light shined, there was one that stood up that night and said that they wished they hadn't have voted for that bill. And I want to thank Brother Jason that night, and I hope he agrees with me, for he was that shining light that I was praying about and I was thinking about. He came out amongst them and said, "Hey, I don't, I wish I hadn't have voted for that." And he encouraged me, he encouraged others, and we sit around the table one day, and we begin to think about how much, we were talking about Brother Jason, how much it took to have courage to come out from amongst them and say, "Hey, I wish I hadn't have voted for that." So I want to thank you for that, from the bottom of my heart, because you stood up, and you were that light, and I prayed about that thing, and you were that light that stood up, and you don't know how much you encouraged others, and how much we've talked about that day, what you said. So anyhow, thank you for that, and I know God's gonna bless you, because you were the one that I, that God had given me and told me to stand. I didn't know it until that next day, until after everything being happened, but I thank you for that. But anyhow, I want to read one thing to you, and this is July 4th, and many of you, I have said this many times, you need to rate it, read it, and engrave it in your heart, the North Carolina preamble. And I preached on this last week. It says, "We, the people of the state of North Carolina, grateful to the Almighty God, the sovereign ruler of the nation, for the preservation of the American Union and the existence of our civil, political, and religious liberties, acknowledging our God and our dependence upon Him for the tims of those blessings to us and our posterity." I want you to look at that word, "posterity." I don't know how many of you have looked it up, but actually means four further generations. It means to put this thing into play, to continue it, that people are gonna die, but they will need to leave a legacy of posterity, to keep on encouraging others, and that's what Brother Jason was encouraging us, that there are some that amidst all odds are gonna stand out. That's what we need today, is more people that are gonna stand up for the Word of God, because we have forgotten the source of our power. The source of our power is God Almighty. We can have the greatest nation upon the face of the earth, we can have all the military, we can have everything, but the first line of defense is our God. We see that back in 1776, when our constitution was eroded, and the people fought for freedom, went up against unsamericable odds, and yet we fought a battle, and we won it for religious freedom. And thank God for those people today, I give them the credit, and thank you guys for putting the "in God" we trust over here many years ago. We need, as I say, put our trust in God, believe He is our sovereign ruler, our God is greater than the world's understanding. Yeah, our God is greater than what the world's understanding. They can continue to think, for some reason, they have a, how to say it, a tell, a tiger body tail?
Thank you, Reverend. Time is up.
Time is up, I didn't hear a bell ring.
It went.
Oh, it did, well, bless your heart.
Hal James?
I'm Hal James, I live at 305 Calico Drive in Craven County, and I want to point out a few aspects of our early voting, one-stop voting that we just had. This year's primary election, early voting started on April 19th, and it ended on May the 5th, I believe that's 15 days. I've heard that it may go for at least 17th in the general election. And the Board of Elections staff, employees, judges, assistant judges, observers, and other volunteers all had to be there early, and many had to stay late, and the polls were open long hours, so that many had to work 14 hours, 15 hours a day, at a great cost to the taxpayers, and what was gained from all that effort? The number of voters who took advantage of early voting was dismal. The average number per day ranged from a high and half lock of 17 per day to Dover with eight, wait, that's not per day in Dover, that's the number for the whole 15 days, so that's an average of half a voter a day. At Truitt, there was 17, so that's a little more than one a day, 23 at Jasper, so that's one and a half a day, 31 at Fort Barnwell, so that's, Fort Barnwell, I mean, that's about two a day, and 40 at Arnold, so now we're getting up to three a day, 45, which is, what, five a day, 61 at Clark. So all in all, 6.5% of voters took advantage of early voting. The county taxpayers had to pay for all this foolishness. Now, I know the state is largely to blame, but have you all taken the measures you can to cut down on the cost? On behalf of the taxpayers, I urge you to look into that. Now, the last thing I want to bring up is an item that's a rumor, that Commissioner Mark will resign not long after he is elected, and allow the remaining members of the board to select his successor instead of the citizens. If this should turn out to be true, it's in stark contrast to how a representative republic should operate. Thank you.
That's the first I've ever heard of that statement, but that's okay. Commissioner Mark is gonna run for four years, and he'll be here for four more years.
More fake news. Johnny Clark?
Good evening, gentlemen. I appreciate the opportunity of being able to come and speak to you this afternoon. Two verses I'd like to share with you from the Bible, then I'm gonna share some other things, and I'll try to quickly go through them so I can get them all in. Proverbs 14:34 says, "Righteousness exhalts a nation, but sin is a reproach to any people." Psalms 33:12 says, "Blessed is the nation whose God is the Lord." In this society that we live today, it seems as if God is, or they are wanting to push God way on out to the outskirts, and we want to pull Him off the shelf whenever we really want something in our life or in our nation. And one of those things that I'd like to share with you this evening is also found in Proverbs, Chapter 23, and verse 10, and it says, "Remove not the ancient landmarks." And I was talking about Israel and their kind of thing back in the Old Testament days, but one of our ancient landmarks here in our nation is the Constitution of the United States of America. I was telling my folks yesterday at church, we seem to hear everybody, or not everybody, a lot of people, I should say, they want to revamp the Constitution, that they say it needs to evolve. It needs to evolve like our culture has evolved in this world that we live in today. And one of those things that I have become very concerned about is the socialists, the communists, the liberals, and those who look at this thing as if we need to do away with it. So I've got eight things I want to share with you right quickly, that if this continues on, you'll see it happen. I remember back when I was a kid, Khrushchev standing in front of his crowd and beating his shoe down on the podium, and he also said this one thing, "We'll take America without firing the first shot," and they're very close to doing it. Communism deals with health care, and we live in a world today where if you can control the health care, you can control the people. Poverty, increase the poverty level as high as possible. Poor people are easier to control and will not fight back if you're providing everything for them to live. There is gun control. Remove the ability to defend themselves from the government, this is communism. That way, you're able to create a police state. Man, do we not hear a lot about, "Let's give up our guns." Well, I don't intend to give up my gun, I don't care who comes to my door, I will not give up my gun. Welfare, take control of every aspect of people's lives, food, housing, and income, and then you'll be able to have another step toward communism. Take control of the education, of what people read and listen to, and take control of what our children learn in school. Probably won't get through with what I want to say tonight, because you're gonna tell me time's up. Now, I don't know this for a fact except for what someone has told me, but I did hear the news yesterday. There are people in this country who do not even know what the year of 1776 stands for. They don't know that people fought for our freedoms, that we might be able to have the freedoms that we have today. That's because of the school system. They don't teach the history no more as they taught when I was in school, and we need to get back to that kind of stuff. I'll go ahead and tell you, it's time to do away with the liberalism, the socialism, and get back to the old-timey way of running a country. See, I knew I wouldn't get through, I'll come back next time.
Okay, thank you, Reverend.
Mr. Chairman, that's it.
Thank you. Next on the agenda is the consent agenda, which consists of the minutes of June 18th, our regular session, and June 4th reconvene session, in addition to the tax releases and refunds. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Roll call both, please.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner Liner?
Yes.
Commissioner McCabe?
Yes.
Commissioner Sampson?
Yes.
Commissioner Tyson?
Yes.
Vice Chair Dacey?
Yes.
Chairman Moore?
Yes. It is my pleasure to introduce the former mayor of Greenville, and also now the director of the Global Park Transportation, and Alan Thomas, and I'd like you to come through.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Commissioners, I want to wish you all the best for the Fourth of July. Remember what this country is all about, I would like to concur with some of the previous speakers, in terms of their thoughts on, we can never, ever forget how hard we fought for this country, and what our ancestors and those before us, what they've sacrificed, but also we're fighting for the future for our children, never forget that. So that's my little, I'll add that little note to that conversation, but with that said, I am here this evening to give a brief, hopefully a brief, presentation about where the global transport stands and about what we've got going on in terms of that asset. I'll tell you, I came on board about 11 months ago, I was asked, I was serving as mayor of the city of Greenville, and I saw this as something that I think is extremely important, and you want to know why? Because I want a future for my children and my grandchildren in eastern North Carolina. We have some tremendous assets in this part of the state, but as often is the case, we need to work as a region together to be able to bring these opportunities together, and that's why I'm so excited to be here today to talk about the transport a bit. We'll run through this kind of quick, and I appreciate my technical support here, but what I've done, I've been involved in strategic planning process for the past eight months that was directed, based on the direction given by the state legislature, working close with Chairman Torbit from the transportation side, and also Harry Brown in the Senate and others. If we're gonna have assets in this state, how can we maximize these assets to bring jobs and opportunity to North Carolina? So that is what this is about, so. If you guys can take a quick look, this is our mission statement, to enhance the economic well-being of North Carolinians by providing multimodal capabilities for global commerce here in North Carolina. And this is a shot of the transport, if you would go ahead and play that video, we'll show you a little bit about our marketing we're putting out here now. of aviation and the future of aerospace." That is what North Carolina is all about. We are currently number four in the United States in aerospace manufacturing, and the opportunity we've only scratched the surface here, what is about to happen here with the F-35 squadrons and the maintenance and everything around that, we have a huge opportunity here in eastern North Carolina, and we need to grasp it before South Carolina and some other states do that. And I think that working in this corridor in the east between Wayne County and Lenore County and Craven and what we have, this entire corridor, we have a real opportunity, we need to get to it before Charleston and some other places get to it, put it that way. Just a real, real close caption, take a look at the transport and a few details about itself. It's a 2,500-acre multimodal park, it's a 1,500-feet runway, which is the second-longest runway in the eastern United States. It was a backup site, actually, for the space shuttle during those trips. 22,000 air flights a year in and out of the site, including a significant amount of service to the military, we're the backup site for Cherry Point, also for Seymour Johnson and other bases across North Carolina and South Carolina. 5,800 acres of shovel-ready property here around that asset, we have over 20 million in wetland land credits that are available, that companies can come in here to, now, within 30 days, we can be breaking ground. So we want to keep that going forward. Also, a new transload facility we built on site within the past several months that allows us to be more innovative in the east. And again, this is a state asset, guys, this is not a one-county's asset. When I'm out trying to bring jobs, it's about a 14 to 15-county area. If you have companies that need opportunities in Craven, or Pamlico, or Jones, or Onslow, if it makes more business sense to bring them in by rail instead of by truck, bringing product in and out, we want to be a facility that helps you be more competitive and keeps jobs here. Also, to the asset, the interstates are continuing to improve, I-95, future 42, future I-587 and 87, and obviously direct access to the ports of call as well. So multimodal is something I mentioned a little bit before, bringing all these assets to one location here, the transport, we think is extremely important, so we can combine and work with our ports, our military, our universities, and retain existing growth and continue to grow in eastern North Carolina. This is a great snapshot, I think, of our region. I think so often we get bogged down in what's happening in one area or other, but I like to do what I call, I erase borders, whether it's state or county borders, whatever port can bring opportunity and jobs to eastern North Carolina, and we need to work with the ports in Norfolk, and Charleston, and Wilmington, and we're doing that, and obviously Morehead City. We're in and out of Morehead City every week right now, bringing commerce through this space, and as we continue to grow. Also, you notice the image to the right, that is what we call the elastic mile, and that's where we really compete, from a transport standpoint. Again, I mentioned the amount of air traffic, we've had over 112 flights of that aircraft that you saw in the earlier video, that's the Antonov, it's the AN-124, it's the second-largest aircraft in the world, and it flies and then out of the transport about every couple of weeks, and we have Spirit Aero Systems there, which I'll talk about here in a minute, which is, builds the A-350 Airbus, one of the largest jetliners in the world, we build the whole center fuselage there, and the wing spars, these are your neighbors that are doing this all across eastern North Carolina, and we ship that to France every week for final assembly. It just shows you the scale of what we can do in this part of the state, we've only scratched the surface. This is just a quick general overview of the site itself, we're located, as many of you know, just outside between Kenton and Greenville, North Carolina, and the area in the red is the actual 11,500-foot runway, the green area is the area that's the proper part of the transport, the dotted line shows the area where we have a 404 permit where we can expand and grow, that's the 5,800 acres. Real quick, here's our current employee base at the transport, we have over 1,420 people working at GTP currently, we have 12 tenants, nine of which are private sector, the rest are public sector, we have an interesting mix and combination there on site. I have 11 staff, I basically have a football team to run this thing, and seven or eight of them wear a blue shirt with their name on it, and they do whatever you ask, and whether it's bringing the aircraft in, or handling maintenance, you know, or security, or fire suppression, and we have a pretty tight and a pretty streamlined team, and I'm very proud of their dedication to the state of North Carolina and to the citizens. Here's our largest two tenants I wanted to mention to you, Spirit Aero Systems on the upper left, the scale of what these professionals are bringing right here to North Carolina, the fact that they just made the largest investment the transport has seen in over a decade, two months ago, $55.7 million, expanding their entire range of operation. It's one thing to recruit a company and have that honeymoon, because anybody can come in and take incentives, but when they come in or investing close to $60 million back in your community, that shows a long-term investment in eastern North Carolina, so we're proud of that. The company there, you see the right below, which is Mount Air Cargo, they do the maintenance and repair for the FedEx fleet, as well as United, and a number of large aircraft fleet doing that right here in eastern North Carolina, extremely vibrant. And here's the reason why I decided to come visit with you, you gentlemen and ladies and folks in the audience here tonight, I want people to get a chance to take a quick look at this map in terms of the workforce distribution. When we started my strategic planning and work, one of the things I wanted to know, I said, "Give me the zip code of where the people that work here, where do they live?" Over 21 counties across eastern North Carolina, that we are working, that people are working across that work in the transport, and I think this is a great snapshot of how we operate in the east. We want to live in our rural communities but have good jobs, and I knew many of my friends and family may have lived three counties away, and they drive to Cherry Point every day with their friends to go to work, and vice versa. What Norris Tolson is doing with the Gateway Partnership up in Rocky Mountain with the new Triangle Tire that the Chinese are building there, that will be 10,000 jobs, and you can believe that people from Craven County and across this entire region, Pitt and other areas, will be working up there and bringing opportunity and hopefully income back to this county and all across the region. And I say this to say this, we are all in this together across eastern North Carolina. If we're gonna have a future, we need the ports, we need the university cities, we need the military-based cities, we need the assets like ours, all in a cohesive strategy, because we've put this investment, our time and money into these resources, now it's time for eastern North Carolina to shine. I know a lot of people talk about population plateauing and property values plateauing, I think our best is yet to come, and it's up to you gentlemen and us here in the public to work together with a cohesive strategy to bring opportunity and private investment. Also, very important, and this is something that in my research we came across, I thought was extremely important, over 18,000 exiting military in eastern North Carolina every year. If we were a state of our own east of, I guess, Fayetteville and east of I-95, we'd be the third-largest military contingent in the United States. And what we want are these great families, these spouses, these folks of highly discipline, when they exit the military after completing their service, what about we get them to stay in North Carolina and be a part of our work base? That's something that we're putting together, a task force now, I'd love to have Craven County closely involved with that, the community colleges are already working on this, how about if we keep that wonderful employee base right here and allow us to recruit industry and opportunities to this part of the state? Trading in innovation is what it's all about. It was a real pleasure to sit with your community college president, as well as the community college president of Wayne County, and Lenore, and Pitt recently, and talk about how can we work strategies together? With F-35 coming in, and with what happened at Seymour Johnson and Cherry Point, our hopes to expand aerospace as an industry and other manufacturing in this part of the state, how can we work together, not have overlap, but have enhancement, we work together? But it all begins not just in the community college level, not just with the exiting military, with those fourth and fifth graders, those young minds. We've got to get to them and get their face out of their phones and laptops some, and get hands-on in technology, show them what applied science and opportunity really exists, and I think that's something, I know it's at the heart of our school teachers really want to do, and anything we can do to support that, I would continue to encourage that. It's the future of our part of the state. Also, with the transport, as we mentioned, it's the foreign trade zone, this is a very important enhancement that we need to take more advantage of. The foreign trade zone actually covers, 214 covers all the ports, including the global transport. And why is this an advantage? If you're a company that wants to import and build something in the US, if you bring in components and have US workers build that, you can have deferred tax until you build a final product, and then release that in the United States, and that's when tax would hit. Or you can have product built here by US workers and export that back out overseas with certain advantages as well. So foreign trade zone is something that's extremely important, we hope to continue to work and move that forward and take advantage. Again, I mentioned when I first came on board with the transport, I was tasked with something with the state legislature, and that was, come forward with a strategic plan. We want to see real marketing around this asset and around eastern North Carolina, and also we want to have a strong web presence. One thing we know, if you do not have a great web presence with what you're trying to promote and market, 90% of the opportunities are gonna go somewhere else. So we have worked really hard and diligently in our process and our strategic planning, we've cooked about an eight-month period, and through that, strategic plans, we all know, these are only as good as when they put to use. You don't want to put these on a shelf, this is not gonna help you. So we work with our consultants, and the thing I'm most proud about this is, rather than a strategic plan that basically is outdated the minute that you print it, we created what we call an action plan in here, and 114 specific action items tied to certain items that had to be accomplished, and I felt that was the best way to be able to have support, not just in the region, but with the state legislature, that here's the ROI on these particular items in year one and two, and if we need to adjust, we can do that going forward as well. So, move this forward. We did a significant amount of analysis here as we went through our strategic plan, having Ted Abernathy over at East Carolina and some other, we wanted to have something that was private-sector-driven, rather than academic-driven, or rather than driven through governmental means. So we put together a tremendous consulting team and looked closely at what are the, within these census tracts, within these 14 counties, what are the emerging opportunities for this region? And the way you find that is, what are the advantages that we bring? Rather than just shooting a shot in the dark, I think in the past, maybe the strategy with this asset and others, trying to be all things to all people, you can't do that. So you got to focus on strategies, we think there's huge opportunity- We think there's huge opportunities. And after that significant research, we drilled in and narrowed in on these four key areas, which will be our future focus. And this is what I pitched to Chairman Torbit, the legislature, and Davis and others there, and the focus in on aerospace and automotive. We think there's a tremendous opportunity in the eastern half of the state. The defense industry, clearly, agribusiness and food science. We're going to model this after what UC Davis is doing in California, within a 100-mile radius of that university. They are growing crop, they're innovating the crop, and they are packaging and doing it all. So we're the breadbasket for a large part of the United States for some of the products we put out. We feel we need to take this from, as you've heard from farm to table, we need to take from farm to shelf right here in eastern North Carolina. And I think we can really do that. So we're going to work closely with UC Davis and others and continue to work on that. So this is a quick little snapshot. I mean, you know, we've been working really hard at our marketing plan and improving and maintaining existing assets and drawing from our regional strengths and continue to work to get forward here. But just one of the few things that we've had happen here in the past eight or nine months, I just want to push forward to you, our renewal of our environmental permit, which is extremely important. We know how difficult that is. We have another 10-year renewal on that report for the entire asset. We've had over $72 million in private sector and public sector investment in this asset in the past year. That's the most in over a decade. I'm very proud of that. That means companies are putting their investment and their dollars in to continue their growth. We're going after also, we think we like to be the one facility in eastern North Carolina that can reach mega park status. So now you're talking about recruiting the automotive industry and aerospace, you aren't just talking about I-85 and Charlotte and those areas, that we have the assets and the people and the willpower here to do it here in eastern North Carolina, and we're going to continue to work in that regard as well. And also, we just feel our workforce development is extremely important as we continue to grow in this part of the state. If you'll hit that again, here's our website, just wanted to give you guys a chance, if you'll take a look at this when you have the opportunity. This is not something we want to have a government website. We're competing in business and industry across the globe here, ladies and gentlemen. To do that, you've got to talk how you're going to grow, live, and work. And also, again, your website is your gateway for commerce, where site selection people decide whether they locate in your region or your state. 90% of that is done right here. You're eliminated from the list if you can't project yourself in terms of where your opportunities rely right here. So from the GIS data about our region, right down to our individual parcels, not just for the trans park, we're pitching the entire eastern North Carolina. Because a lot of good people, as we showed in the map before, may want to live in New Bern and raise their family in Craven County or in Pitt County or other areas, but we will provide great jobs with our asset and going forward. And of course, our secret weapon here in eastern North Carolina is quality of life. And never underestimate how important this really is. You can have a lot of great dynamics, a lot of resources here, but we have a lot to sell in this part of the state. I'm very proud to be here and raise my family in this part of North Carolina and this part of the country. I think there's a huge opportunity in this state. I think there's a huge opportunity in eastern North Carolina, and I think with all of us working together collectively, we can do great things here in North Carolina, especially in the eastern half. So our goal is going forward, our model is about stability. There's been 11 directors of the trans park since it began. Think about that, 11 directors. You can't have continuity, and there's been an equal number of strategies. You need to commit to a resource, focus on the markets you're going to go after, and move it forward. So that is our area of focus here. Five years of stability, I'm working close with the state legislature on this, we've received their full endorsement. Focus strategy, true global connectivity, progressive marketing plan with economic development partners, and measurable, accountable action steps. And that's what we're all about. And I look forward to coming back here next year, and hopefully, we can continue this conversation and talk about some success measures that we've had. And our time is now. I think in the past, I think many things were projected and brought forward, I think, in many initiatives across the state. But now, I think our opportunity is really here, with our ports, with our roads, the progress we're seeing with rail and other things that are changing. It's our time in eastern North Carolina, and it's time to go work together and then help make it happen. So Mr. Chairman, it's been a pleasure to speak, and I really appreciate your patience allowing me to come and present, and I will be going to commissioners' meetings across the entire east over the next four or five months. I think it's important, I don't know if this has ever been done before, but I just think if I'm out here working on behalf of our communities and with the state, that we should have time to always work together and look for opportunities and be aware of what we're doing, because you never know when somebody sees this and a business opportunity is brought to North Carolina and eastern North Carolina by a chance to present to you, you gentlemen here today. So thank you very much.
Thank you, and I think that the people that are here and the commissioners enjoyed the whole thing, the biography you've sent out here on the transport park. Are there any questions on any of the commissioners?
I just got one comment. Timothy, you shouldn't have gave him your playbook. I think everything we've heard up there, Timothy's been pushing for the last three and a half years.
Well, maybe we're on the right page and we're in accord. So thank you for the honor to speak here today. Thank you.
I'm going to take a moment to take Chairman's privilege and introduce to you a gentleman by the name of Anthony Thomas, who is our new animal service director. So Anthony, could you come up here to the podium for a moment? I believe you have your family there, you want to introduce them?
Yes, I can. My name's Anthony Thomas, standing in the back. That's my wife Kate, and that's my son Logan. Kate is from New York, transplant down here. Logan is-
We won't hold that against you.
He certainly can't.
Logan is straight military in North Carolina, which is what brought me here. So typical family, I'm one of those military members that decided to stay here and bring my talents to, as LeBron James said, bring my talents to Craven County.
He's only with us a short period, but he's already showing a lot of strategies, so it's welcome to have you on our board.
Thank you very much, I appreciate it.
Next is social services.
Thank you, Chairman, Commissioners, County Manager. We bring before you a budget amendment, rolling forward special adoption funds and including additional funds that we've received for these purposes. If you have any questions, I'll be more than happy to try to answer the person.
Okay. Do we have a, let's have a motion first on the social service budget amendment?
So moved.
Second. And no discussion? Could we have a roll call vote?
Certainly. Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner Liner?
Yes.
Commissioner McCabe?
Yes.
Commissioner Sampson?
Yes.
Commissioner Tyson?
Yes.
Chairman Mark?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, have a good night.
Cooperative Extension, Mike Carroll, budget amendment.
Chairman Mark, member of the boards, good evening.
Good evening.
I do, I hope you've had time to look at the paperwork we've sent to you. I also request a budget amendment to bring forward the Ag Prime Grant into this fiscal year, and also to introduce revenue and expenditure line items for the NC Innovation Grant to extend our drone project.
Do I have a motion?
Move to accept.
Second. All right. Any discussion? I believe you're having a meeting on Wednesday, aren't we?
Yes, sir. Having a meeting to, that was for another grant, that was for the pesticide container recycling. We'll have our grand opening Thursday, thank you for reminding me of that, too.
All right. All those in favor? I don't think we, we don't need a roll call, do we?
Yes, a budget amendment. Yes, sir.
I don't, all right. It doesn't say so, but all right, let's have a roll call vote.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner Liner?
Yes.
Commissioner McCabe?
Yes.
Commissioner Sampson?
Yes.
Commissioner Tyson?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Dacey?
Yes.
Chairman Mark?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. I look forward to giving you your report this fall.
Thank you.
Timothy Downs, Department Matters Economic Development Budget.
So maybe me is third in line with a budget amendment, I'm not sure what that means. Hopefully, nothing bad. Well, good evening, and Commissioner Liner, I appreciate your nice comments there. I've got a budget amendment for you as well. I think you're all aware of what this is about. We tried, I think diligently to get this done in the last budget year, but weren't able to. But you have before you the budget amendment to move dollars to relocate some excess soil to make a parcel in our industrial park more marketable.
Move to approve.
Second.
Okay, any discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner Liner?
Yes.
Commissioner McCabe?
Yes.
Commissioner Sampson?
Yes.
Commissioner Tyson?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Dacey?
Yes.
Chairman Mark?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Timothy. Next is appointments, pending, current, upcoming.
Mr. Chairman, I would like to make a motion, if you would like to do it now or do it during commission reports, whatever it is much you would like.
If you'd like to do it now, it's fine.
Mr. Chairman, I would like a motion that this board adopt the resolution in support of the Equal Rights Amendment. I have thought about it and thought about it, and we've had ladies up here time and time again, have had nobody really speak out against it. I see it as, to me, it's pretty cut and dry. I'm sure there's always some potential problems in any type of legislation that's passed, but I'm going to make that motion.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, discussion.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make an amendment to the motion, if I may. County attorney, if you will, listen to this amendment, but I'd like to ask that this vote be postponed until December the 3rd, when the new seated Board of Commissioners takes office.
All right, it's a motion, or the second? I'll second the motion. Any discussion?
If there's no more discussion, we need to vote on the main motion first.
On the main motion first, yes. Roll call vote on the main motion.
On the main motion. Commissioner Jones?
No.
Commissioner Liner?
This is on the amendment to the motion.
The amendment to the motion.
On the amendment to the motion.
Is that correct?
Amendment to the motion.
Amendment to the motion, yes.
Okay, amendment to the motion. Commissioner Liner?
No.
Commissioner McCabe?
No.
Commissioner Sampson?
No.
Commissioner Tyson?
No.
Vice Chairman Dacey?
No.
Chairman Mark?
You want to hear her to read it?
Oh, you can read it, you can.
No.
All right.
So we have, my understanding that the motion is that the board supports the adoption of the ERA amendment without the delay.
Okay, so there was an amendment, the amendment just failed. What was the vote on that amendment?
One to six.
One to six.
All right, we're on to the main motion. Mr. Chairman, does the commissioner have a copy of the resolution?
I've got a copy, no, I've got a resolution here, but it's not one that I have developed myself. And I would like to read, I'm sure everybody's familiar with it by now, but the amendment says, I can find it, the ERA states equality of rights under the law shall not be denied or abridged by the United States or by any state on account of sex. It was passed in Congress in 1972, but fell three states short of the 38 needed for ram of ratification. This, what we're doing is just saying this board supports the resolution, and it goes to the state, and then they do what they want to with it.
You done? Well, it's my recollection that what that resolution actually said was that it wanted this board to take a position to have our members of the General Assembly then adopt the amendment on behalf of the state. So while I, while we have before us a request to ask our members of the General Assembly to support the Equal Rights Amendment, we really have two questions before us. First, is an action on our part legitimate? And second, as a representatives of the people of Craven County, do we agree that the underlying intent of the amendment? With respect to the former, as a nation, we already have a constitution and laws that provide for equal rights. As evidence, I would point to the 14th Amendment, the Equal Pay Act of 1963, the Civil Rights Act of 1964, among many other valid statutes. As has been stated over the last several months by those who have professionally and politely come before this board seeking our support, the House in 1971 and the Senate in 1972 originally adopted the Equal Rights Amendment. Both chambers approved the resolutions with overwhelmingly bipartisan votes. Once adopted by Congress, President Richard Nixon expressed his support for the measure as well. However, rarely stated is the fact that the resolutions adopted by Congress included the requirement that the ratification process be completed within seven years, a threshold that was never met by those advocating for the passage of the amendment, and a fact that renders the resolution before us irrelevant. In 1972, 22 states ratified the amendment and eight more joined in 1973. However, between 1974 and 1977, only five states approved the ERA. At the same time, legislatures of five states that had ratified the ERA then adopted legislation rescinding that ratification. Therefore, the true number of states having adopted the ERA by the close of the seven-year period was 30, not 35. We do not have a three-state solution here. While it is unclear as to whether a state may rescind the adoption of a constitutional amendment, in 1982, the United States Supreme Court ruled in support of one of the federal bodies charged with administratively monitoring the ratification process, stating that the ERA had not received the required number of ratifications, so that the amendment has failed. As such, there is no legitimate ratification process currently pending with respect to the ERA, and taking action on the resolution before us tonight only lends credibility to the fiction that has been created by those who are seeking to create mischief. Now, with respect to the underlying intent of the Equal Rights Amendment, I would not be in favor of that either. First, I believe some laws have been written specifically because men and women are different, despite how passionately some on the left want us to believe otherwise. These natural differences tell me that having a law in place requiring men and women to use separate bathrooms is just simply not unreasonable. I also support sex segregated prisons and women's shelters that prohibit men from entering. There are also laws that provide alimony, the continued payment of Social Security benefits for wives and widows, and all of these accommodations would be invalidated by the courts were the ERA to be adopted. Finally, as a conservative who values the culture of life, I feel our ability to protect the unborn would greatly be threatened. Under current law, it is illegal to spend federal money in support of abortions, a law typically referred to as the Hyde Amendment. As I am unaware of any federal law that prohibits the use of federal funds for any surgical procedure uniquely prescribed for men, I wonder how long it will be that the Hyde Amendment will survive with the passage of the ERA. As such, I will vote against the amendment because it is both untimely and because it is inconsistent with my views as a matter of public policy. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Now we can vote on the original.
Anybody else want to speak? I would just like to say, Commissioner Dacey, that that is not settled, that the states that voted in favor of it are now, because of the time lapse, are not going to count those as counted. There are some legal scholars that do dispute that. If you say the time is not now, when will the time be? Just curious.
Mr. Chairman, if I can respond? The Supreme Court of the United States said that the question has been asked and answered. They made a final determination in 1982 that indeed, that the entity that was charged with overseeing the process, that when they came to the conclusion that the states had not met the requisite number of states in order to pass it, that the issue was settled and done at that point in 1982. Additionally, there were five states that rescinded their initial authorization. So, my only response is that if not now, when? Well, perhaps when the issue comes back and it's appropriate. If the Congress wants to go ahead and either retroactively reauthorize the process for the states to go ahead and collect the passage of state legislatures, that's fine. They haven't done that yet. So, all we're doing is effectively saying to our members of the General Assembly, go pass something that in my view is no longer ripe for consideration.
That very well could be. I don't think that that's absolutely established, despite what you say, because I've read some too.
It's a Supreme Court decision, I don't know how to read it any other way.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Our process of voting, we adjust about call to order, the way that we should vote. Now, where I can see it, we need to go ahead and vote on what is presented to us. Now, if the government wants to fight it out, let them fight it out, but we will be done what we are supposed to do.
Each member of the commission should have their opportunity to make their discussion. Is there any other discussion? Okay?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Just so I have clarity on what you're getting ready to adopt, I have a copy of a resolution calling for ratification of the Equal Rights Amendment in front of me. Would you like me to provide this to the board and just hold this?
We have a young lady in the audience, whose name is Emily Box, who goes to Campbell University, she's a student there, and she received an award from the Golden Leaf Scholar as she was involved with a Golden Leaf program, as I understand it. Could you stand up and tell us a little bit about it?
Um, yes. So, Golden Leaf is a nonprofit organization that helps with poor North Carolina. They've been doing it for a long time. But scholarships is one of the things they do, and I'm in their leadership program, which means they offer paid center internships, which is really, really nice. I'm gonna be in there someday, so I'm at the hospital at Carolina, in the emergency department, and I'm getting so much experience. And so, with that, they also, with each year, they have us do different things to get involved with the community, and that's one of the reasons why I'm here today, is to learn more about the needs of our community, because that summer I'm gonna be doing a volunteer project.
Thank you. Okay. Mr. County Manager?
Yes, sir, I gotta get the courage. I was feverishly looking for a copy that I thought we had, but I'm gonna have to revert back to the default, which was the original resolution that was provided to you some time ago by a person who came before you. I did have some concerns about this resolution, particularly the last two, whereas, Dennis, if you can go down to the bottom, excuse me, the last two, now therefore be. The way this resolution was written, it was written from the group to you, so now therefore be it resolved that we call on all members of the Craven County Board of Commissioners to support the North Carolina Ratification Equal Rights Amendment. You wouldn't do that to yourself. That's like someone in the audience writing a resolution to you, so that needs to be changed. What you're actually doing is you're encouraging the General Assembly to approve the ratification process, and then be it further resolved that we affirm our strong support of the Equal Rights Amendment, our commitment to just pay the federal legislature and now at actions and federal state. I'm a little concerned about that, I'm not really sure what you're asking for there. That's a little nebulous to me. So, I mean, if you want, we can frame that out differently. I certainly would change the now therefore, because that's just written wrong. The other parts, you know, the whereas's, I have not reviewed in some time to give you an opinion on.
Okay. Now, I'll have to ask the attorney, can we, would we defer this until we have a proper reading of this? I mean, as far as each commissioner getting it?
Well, you can certainly tweak it during the meeting if it was, you know, the board's pleasure. I assume this is the resolution that was moved to be adopted. I think we're guessing at that a little bit over here, but certainly if it is, that language needs to be cleaned up. County Manager's exactly right about that. You know, you can defer the vote until the next meeting and have a clean resolution vote then, or you can...
Mr. Chairman, on the now therefore be it resolved clause, if you wanted to fix this, you'd just simply strike Craven County Board of Commissioners and put on, call on members of the North Carolina General Assembly to support the North Carolina ratification. You would just swap out the Craven County Board of Commissioners and insert North Carolina General Assembly, which is the way that I had thought that this had been written, or maybe rewritten, in the draft that came to a subsequent to this one.
I think it had, sir, I apologize, I can't put my hand on it tonight.
That would fix that issue, Mr. Chairman.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a suggestion to Scott, Commissioner Dacey's point. The process is that it has to be passed by both members of Congress, both the Senate and the House, the US Congress, and then it has to be passed by, is it two-thirds?
Thirty-eight states.
Thirty-eight states, all right. It was passed by Congress in 1972, or whenever it was, and...
With the stipulation that they had seven years to get it done.
Right, and that was not done, they did not get the 38 states. I've read legal scholars say that that deadline was not the end of. With that said, I agree with Commissioner Dacey that it's a moot point for us to send something to the House if it doesn't do anything. In other words, if we can determine that the extension is gone, it can't be revived. I have read Nevada last year, their, I guess it was Attorney General said, "We believe that Congress can go back and amend the deadline today." Congress can do anything they want to. They can spend money they don't have, they can do anything they want to. And so, you know, I would like to, I would like some legal advice on that. If that is the case, then the process needs to just start all over. I agree, Commissioner Dacey, that it would need to start over, and it would be irrelevant for us, this board, to pass something other than to just advise our delegation that we support an Equal Rights Amendment.
Okay.
So, I guess what I'm asking is for our attorney to look at this, but if, I don't know how deep he wants to get into the actual determination of, you know, is this a dead case according to the Supreme Court, which took action in 1982?
So, is the commissioner essentially suggesting that what we do is table this, the consideration of this resolution, and wait for the county attorney to come back with us, to us with an analysis as to whether or not there's still life to this?
Yes, I am.
I would say the procedure that we have been following on the different rules and regulations of this board is that we already voted to vote on it by those who voted against not having it. I'm not a lawyer.
Commissioner Sampson, we voted against the amendment, sir.
This, what's the thing I'm talking about? I thought you were intelligent enough to know what I was talking about, that's the only thing we voted on in the beginning, but where I can see it, why we want to change the rules of the game at this late moment. We should've did this in the beginning. Why don't we go ahead and vote on it, and then if we're having a problem, fix it? Y'all these legal scholars up here, I'm not a lawyer.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
If I may. Here's the only problem with that, Commissioner Sampson. If we vote, and it goes down, then it's down. He's asking that we postpone until our lawyers get back with us to tell us an up or down on that. But if you're calling for a vote, and he doesn't rescind his nomination, then this subject is dead until January, if it so desires and when it be wanted brought forward again. So, right now, we're looking just for more information. We're not killing it, but if you're calling for a vote, my understanding, we will kill this thing.
Well, that'd be all right if you kill it, but let's kill it, let's follow the procedure.
If you know what the votes are, then maybe, I don't know. I don't know what the votes are.
Well, neither do I, but either way it goes.
Well, let's go ahead and kill it then. I believe if you're gonna follow procedure, for one thing, why you want to change in the middle of the game? Why didn't this come up in the beginning?
Because commissioners didn't know it until I was able to talk about it, which couldn't...
Well, see, I can't believe what you're saying.
Well, that's nice of you to say.
Okay, okay. Mr. Chairman?
That's why we got a lawyer coming.
You're out of order, Mr. Sampson.
Since I made the motion, let me just point out that Court 1939 upheld congressional authority determined in 1868 that the 14th Amendment was properly ratified, which, there was some questions on that, and they gave, the Supreme Court gave Congress some leeway, because that wasn't passed exactly according to procedure. In this context, in the context of this judicial precedent, nonpartisan counsel to a Nevada State Legislative Committee concluded in 2017 that if three more states sent their ratification to the appropriate federal official, it could then be up to Congress to determine whether a sufficient number of states had indeed ratified the Equal Rights Amendment. That was my point. Are you staying with your original motion?
Mr. Chairman?
Well, my motion was to have adopt a resolution, which we don't have, and therefore, I'm going to request that we table this until the next regular scheduled night meeting. And I would like to see the resolution, if anybody would like to give some input to staff, fine.
I believe we need a second on that.
My intention to vote for a resolution, if it meets the requirements that I think it should, and then we'll let the court sort it out, which I don't think they fully sorted it out yet, according to some of the documentation I've read.
All right, Mr. Attorney, we need a second on that.
I believe so.
Okay, I made a motion to table until the next, that needs to be... Second.
All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye?
No.
Nays?
No.
Three nays?
Nay.
Roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Jones?
Was a hard one here.
Nay.
Commissioner Liner?
Please tell me what we're voting on.
You're voting to table it until the meeting in August, first week.
Table it until August?
And you seconded his...
Yeah, okay. Understand what we've got here. Okay. Yes.
Okay. Commissioner McCabe?
Miss question, once we do this here, next meeting, we can pass, I'm not gonna pass it, right?
Correct. You'll have something specific to vote on, you'll have an actual resolution.
Well, we have a resolution now. That's not, what you're asking for is a legal opinion.
Yes, he's asking for a legal opinion of that resolution.
I'll wait.
What was that?
I'll wait, the next meeting.
Commissioner Sampson?
Nay.
Commissioner Tyson?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Dacey?
No.
Chairman Mark?
Yes.
We have four to three. In favor.
Which one? Had four?
Four, yeah.
Okay.
Liner, McCabe, Tyson, and Mark in favor of table.
Next on the agenda is appointments. Pending appointments, Adult Care Home Advisory, we have six vacancies. Mr. County Manager? We have six vacancies on that Adult Care Home Advisory Committee. Would it be good for me to send the CAG a letter stating when they're going to be able to fill some of those?
Sir, it would, however, you know there's been some recent legislation that's, in my belief, made that almost impossible to fill because of the process. However, they did fill one, which I was quite surprised at, but to get a volume of six at one time with the process, I don't know. I certainly think a letter would bring it to their attention, if that's what you're looking for.
Yeah, I think so, because they took that privilege away from us, basically. Okay, then if we could make up a letter for me on that. Craven County Board of Adjustments, we have a vacancy. Emergency Medical Services Advisory Council, we have two vacancies. Fire Tax Commissioner, we have a reappointment of Sue Arthur. Do I have a motion on that, to approve by somebody? All right, I'll do it.
What district, Mr. Chairman?
She was Township Six.
Township Six.
Hold on to that one.
Hold on to that one.
Has anybody talked with her? I didn't see it.
She has submitted an application requesting to be...
Requesting reappointment?
Then I'll nominate her.
Okay. She's nominated. Current appointments, Fire Tax Commissioner Ruben Hart has submitted the application containing attachment 7B for appointment to the Fire Commission to replace Shep Carroll, who will be moving to Township Seven. Do I have a motion?
Should I move?
Accepted. Juvenile Crime Prevention, Rick Moses is seeking reappointment for Juvenile Crime Prevention Council.
Should I move?
Craven County Planning Board, Tom Lilly is seeking reappointment to Craven County Planning Board, I'll make that motion. Craven County Clean Sweep Committee, Robert Blair is seeking reappointment for Craven County's Clean Sweep Committee.
Should I move?
Mr. Chairman, if I may ask, that the appointment that was made to the Planning Board, which district does this gentleman live in?
Do you know the district on that?
I do not, but I'd be glad to get that information for you.
I believe he's Township One.
Township One?
Do you know it, Mr. Chairman?
All right, we'll have to check on that, we'll leave that go until next. Upcoming appointments, Adult Care Advisory Committee, Cheryl Wyatt and Susan Matthews, that's coming up. Susan Matthews actually resigned, so she should not be on there. Craven Community Child Protection Team, Deborah Kenier and Diane Donald. Emergency Medical Services Advisory Council, James Davis, Doug Ferguson, Mark Dale, and Jane Matthews, and Fire Commissioner Otto Simmons, that's all for the next. County Attorneys Report.
Mr. Chairman, good evening. One item for the board's consideration, we have an initial offer to purchase real property, tax parcel 10444,000. Commissioners have considered many of these over the years, this is property that the county acquired through a tax foreclosure, we've received an offer to purchase it, and need your blessing to move forward with the process.
Should I move?
Oh, second.
All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Nays? The ayes have it.
Thank you.
County Manager's Report.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, Commissioners, appreciate the opportunity to present to you tonight. I wanted to remind the board, we will not be having a second July meeting. Your next regularly scheduled meeting will be August the 6th, at 7:00. Just want to make the public aware of that. I did have just some limited comments, I was very excited, I was hoping Anthony could stay, our new Animal Services Director, who you met tonight, he's hit the ground running about two weeks now, and doing a great job. He's got some ideas, some changes he'd like to make, and we're certainly working with him on how those take place, but from what I can see after two weeks, we're really pleased to have him here, and he's got a lot of energy, and will be putting a lot of energy forth through our animal community in Craven County. So, with that, that's my comments. Mr. Chairman, unless you have things for me?
No, other than congratulate you on getting a director, and...
We're pleased.
I think that we've got something going in the shelter now, with a whole new staff, and we have two officers that will be running around catching...
Yep. I should've said, we had a second Animal Control Officer start on June 29th, late last week, and I have not met that individual yet, but understand they're on board, so that'll get us back to almost fully staffed, there's one more supervisor position inside the shelter that needs to be filled.
And we'll have a whole new attitude.
Correct. Oh, and, Mr. Chair, just so you're aware, we do have a closed session in a meeting dealing with economic development, Mr. Attorney will take you into that once you're ready.
Commissioners Reports. Commissioners Reports. Commissioner Tyson?
Yes, sir, Ms. Chairman. I would just like to say that the Trent River Raff Race was not last weekend, but the weekend before. And it was a wonderful, I hope a lot of people were able to get out there and see it. Great turnout for the first year. I really do expect that the enthusiasm being up as it is now, I think it'll quadruple in size in two or three years and become one of the biggest festivals in eastern North Carolina, rivaling the Mum Fest and the Croker, well, we already bigger than the Croker.
Croker Fest.
The Morehead Seafood Festival, et cetera. So, it's great, we're a river city, it's good to have an event like that in celebration of the river. Commissioner Lainer did get the opportunity to see me get knocked in the dump booth a few times.
More than once.
Actually, the county manager tried to put me in.
Spent ten dollars and didn't even give it.
He spent ten dollars and didn't even hit the backstop.
I didn't stretch.
I got kind of embarrassed taking his money. But it was a good turnout, and I do hope the enthusiasm, and I believe it is, is going to continue and it's going to grow and become just another, one of those great reasons to visit New Bern and move to New Bern. Mr. Chairman, all the equal rights amendment, I know there's some that don't think it's necessary. A lot of women do think it needs to be memorialized in our Constitution. You could argue that there's things already in the Constitution that protects women's I would like to see that done. I think a lot of women would like to, and there's some people that will oppose that, and they'll have the opportunity next Board of Commission when we decide to take this up again. But I tell you, I'm gonna make some people mad right now, but I would argue that the biggest challenges right now in our country are not with women's rights, but with the failure of a lot of young men. Males are struggling right now, and there's nobody that seems to be advocating on their behalf. But if you look at virtually every statistic, from high school graduation to college graduation to advanced degrees in college, to lawyers, to go to the law school at the University of Chapel Hill, see how many males are in there. Males are failing across the nation. Look at the prisons. Ninety-three percent of the prison inmates are male. Who's advocating for them? So, maybe there needs to be a men organization of supporting male rights. And I don't say that in a cavalier manner. I say it because for whatever reason our society today, men are struggling across the board. You can't deny the statistic. So, enough said, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Mr. Jones?
I have nothing, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Lainer?
Sir, I just got one thing. I want to wish everybody a safe, happy Fourth of July, and if you're around Havelock starting at five o'clock at our Freedom Fest, that goes at five, nine o'clock fireworks kick off, and it's great family orientation, pie eating, pizza eating, watermelon, three-legged races. It's a good time for the family, so if you're there, come join us.
Okay. Mr. Chairman, I just have, we wish everybody a wonderful, independent day, and God bless you each and every one of you. Be safe, be careful of the fireworks, and eat well, drink a lot of water, and stay home. Thank you.
Commissioner Sampson?
Yes, I would like to recognize, I don't know if she's still here now, our alderman, E.T. Mitchell.
I think she's in the bathroom.
Glad to have you with us. Thanks, alderman. We're glad to have you with us. And also, I would like to say that I'm really interested that women have their rights. I have a wife that's a woman and also...
Now we're talking the same language, Mr. Chairman.
I want to have the rights. And also, I have four daughters, and I would like to see them, I want everybody to have their equal chances. If you pay taxes, I don't think they cut your taxes anymore. You're equal there. And I'm just, I just want to see people have the same rights as other people have, because if you don't pay your taxes on, to the federal government, if you don't pay on your housing, you can believe they're coming in and taking away if you're male or female. So, I feel like you should be treated equal, because we have a lot of Christians right here, and, you know, the Lord made all of us equal. But it seems like we want to separate. I don't think we're that smart. I know I'm not. We can't separate because he did that. He gave us some, it's simple thing that we have to do to make it in. And if we don't do them, whether we're male, female, we're going to either the hot place or the comfortable place. You can take your choice. And I'm just, really, I received an email about a month ago, and they said that, this email, I don't have it now, it looked like the devil must stole it from me, but the email said the United States Senate and also the House of Representatives had passed the equal rights amendment. I don't know how I got it, but I read it, I let some more people read it. But anyway, I only know if the devil was in the picture or not, but I know he get on a whole lot of things. But I keep fighting that the women have their rights, because I don't like, I wouldn't want, I want my equal rights. When I go to court, I want my rights. A lot of times you might not get them, but I still want them. And I will keep on fighting that the women have theirs, because I feel that they have been a great tribute to us in our community. I know if it weren't for a woman, I wouldn't be the man that I am today, my mama. And I know that she went through, I would say just about, if her pastor went through hell to help bring us up. Couldn't find my daddy part of the time. He was part of me. But I'm just thankful that he made me keep right on fighting. It's not worth having if you're not worth fighting for. And I encourage you to keep fighting for it. And another thing I have here is that we had a citizen, the tree fell on the house, Fletcher Allen. Some of you might know him, some of you don't know him. And he went out there, the Red Cross gave him funds to stay in a hotel two nights. And while he was in a hotel, somebody broke into his house and took what little bit they could out of his house. But the good news is that we had some citizens that have players that they were going to give help for that time. He was a piano player. He moved, it was in Sunday's paper, that's the way I found out about it. I know the guy because he played for our church one time. And overall, he was, his mother, his grandmother raised him. He moved with his grandmother when he was a baby. He said he was six months old and moved with his grandmother. His family were too poor to take care of him, and he stayed with his grandmother the whole time. But I'm just enthused with our citizens, how they come in to help Fletcher. And my wife, she, it was me and calls and asked him about his troubles, and he told her about somebody, about this man had came by there and said Steve came by there and gave his assistance. And I'm just thankful that we still have people in our community that willing to help others. And that's a bright light in my mind right now. Also, we need to come close together with one another. I see a long time ago that I want to help people because somebody might come by to help me someday. And I was cutting out there, cutting that grass the other day, and it was ninety-something degrees, because I waited till it got a little cooler than ninety-seven. But I could have fell out out there. Somebody could have come by and picked me up, but the Lord was so good, he let me finish it. And I think about these things, and I work hard to be a Christian. I might, some people might, now, I'm glad people ain't judges, because if people were judges, I probably would be on my way to hell too. But I'm so glad we got a God that's a forgiving God, that forgives you over, he said seventy times seventy, because that's what he told one of the disciples. And I asked him, how many times ought I to forgive my brother? Old Peter, he wanted to go, he was gonna go, he was gonna go seven, seven times. The Lord told him seventy times seventy. So, that's how often we should forgive our brothers and our sisters. But I want to say, let's say one gender include all, but the sister seemed like they had been left out, so I'm gonna put them in there so we know we talking about them too. That's all I have.
Thank you. Commissioner, Vice Chairman?
Mr. Chairman, thank you very much. I want the Commissioners to know that my vote in opposition to extending the debate into August is not because I am afraid of what we might learn, but I'm going to be on vacation with my family that week. It's the only week that my kids are available for us to take a little trip. So, we're going to be in Wisconsin that night, and I won't be here to engage in debate that evening, so I do apologize. I also want folks to know that I'm not against the rights of women. That, in my view, is not what this is about.
Don't look at me, guys.
But you're the one that's talking.
You might be guilty.
You're the one that's talking. So, this is, to me, about process. As you folks know, you all know what I do for a living, I'm a lobbyist. I'm all about the process of the institution, the way in which stuff is supposed to work. The Constitution says that it's supposed to be followed, that in order to amend the Constitution of the United States, you're supposed to do things a pretty specific way. And we're not doing it that way in this instance. We're asking the General Assembly to put their stamp of approval on something that is no longer valid for us to be considering. And so, that's, I mean, that's just the process side of things. Then, of course, all the other issues that I mentioned are my concerns from a public policy perspective. And these are not, these are not concerns that are unique. In nineteen seventy-two, United States Senator Sam Urban, Democrat from North Carolina, proposed nine separate amendments to the ERA to protect the traditional rights of women. Every one was defeated on a roll call vote. None of the amendments established legislative history of the ERA was intended to do exactly what the Urban Amendments would have done. Bottom line is that Democrat Sam Urban wanted amendments to have exempted women from compulsory military service and from combat duty, and they would have protected traditional rights of wives, mothers, widows, and those who served a responsibility, who serve in the responsibility of fathers. They would have preserved laws that secure privacy to males and females. They would have continued the laws to make sexual offenses punishable by crimes. All of these things are things that could potentially be overturned if this amendment is successful. All of these protections that we have as a society to protect the interests of women can be overturned if this amendment is successful. Now, none of these amendments to the underlying constitutional amendment proposed by Senator Urban, a Democrat, were accepted at that point. Now, it will take a super majority of the United States House of Representatives to go back and extend the life of this thing. The United States House of Representatives in the Senate can't agree on when to take a summer recess to get a super majority. Well, maybe that's the one thing that they can actually agree on. But I just want folks to know that it is not because I'm opposed to the equality of what, my wife would never let me get away with a statement like that.
I think you would.
No, she wouldn't. But she also wouldn't let me get away with voting for this thing either. So, I want to thank the Chairman for indulging me in this few minutes, and I've got nothing more. I just hope that everybody has a wonderful summer, and I'm looking to see you later in August.
I want to thank the board for acting in the way we're supposed to act in discussion and coming up with the solutions when we've had discussion. I would like to just mention that I'm ending my eighth year as Commissioner in District One. I've worked hard in District One, and because of that, the people in District One asked me to come back and run. And I am running for four years, and I will serve the full four years. I made a promise to my brother, my oldest brother, who's ninety-two, that I would outlive him, so I will be around for the next four years. And that ends that.
Okay.
Let's go into closed session.
Make a motion, go on closed session.
Let us read the closed session. The board will be requested to go into closed session pursuant to NCG 143, 318, 11A4 to discuss the location and expansion of industries, other businesses in the area served by the public lobby. Okay. Jaren?